The next one is G1S. And that was for distributing flyers throughout the community in the mailrooms to sell furniture.
Wait a minute, was this a one-time thing they did?
Yeah.
Okay, but so we're finding them for, but were they, were they told and they stopped?
No, they didn't.
They kept doing it?
Yes, they left it, left the flyers up.
G1S you said? G1S, thanks.
G1S, yes. H1F was for screens.
H1F as in Frank?
F as in Frank.
Okay.
This is I3F for unauthorized resident. And N1A, excessive number of residents and screens. Two separate letters on that.
Is it one, is it considered one violation?
No, one violation is that patio screen is torn very badly. The other is that they have more people living in the apartment.
So would this be like, this would be two separate fines?
Two separate fines, yes.
For N1A?
Yes.
Do you have to get rid of the other people?
Yes.
Too many residents and screens.
Yes. And N3H balcony screen needed to be repaired.
N3X?
H.
N3X?
H as in Henry.
Oh, H.
H3X?
It's the guy who put complaint for the apartment.
S1L.
Wait, wait, H3X was what?
Screens.
Okay.
Screens. S1L is unregistered dog. Dog. S2L is screens.
But what, what exactly with the S2L?
S2L, they removed the screen from their balcony completely.
Okay, yeah, I remember that.
S2Z decorations on their windows.
Decorations, like, like what kind of decoration?
Like stuff from Easter. The picture is.
It's attached.
Could that be, okay, could that be like a snowbird that, that left right after Easter and?
I have no idea.
No, but I mean.
By the way, it's been there since Easter.
Is it a tenant occupied or is it owner occupied? Cause I was thinking maybe for all the owner occupied units.
It's a tenant. It's a tenant.
Okay, cause I was thinking maybe for all the, well, specifically the snowbird occupied units that maybe we can postpone the hearing for those until November too, like we did with the jet ski. Cause everybody, everybody that's a snowbird is gone. So that, when we get to the motion, but let's, um.
Okay. And S3Z is the final one. And that's storage on their balcony of panels, like door panels, folding door panels.
Alright.
And that's the last one.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve right now. Okay, before we get to, are you one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, before we do that though, uh, let me, um. No, you can go first and I'll make, I'll make one.
So first of all.
Can you, can you come to a mic?
Hello, everyone.
I don't think it's on. It's on.
It's on? Okay.
Okay.
So I'm in E1Z. So first of all, I didn't get notice of any of this. I just came to the meeting and I saw this, um.
Excuse me, I hate to cut you off. I spoke to you at your apartment.
Please don't cut me off, Dan, let me.
I cut, I spoke to you at your apartment. Do not say that you did not get notice. George and I spoke to you at your apartment.
Are you finished?
If you're gonna be factual.
Let, let us finish and then, and then you can come in.
So I did not get written notice of this, this meeting or anything like that. I'm just here and I see everything that's there. So first of all, I got a violation for my screens that they needed to be repaired. This was in May. And that was the first notice I had gotten. It was being sent to the violation committee. I had not gotten two previous notices before then. I wrote to the violation committee because I could not make that last meeting, last minute meeting. And I explained to them that I had no notice of my screens being ripped out. I mean, being needed to be repaired because there were only small little tears. I bought the apartment on foreclosure, so there's been a lot of damage in the apartment that I needed to repair. Anyway, I got an estimate to come and have my, the screens fixed and everything. The violation committee agreed that I needed notice, so they did not find me. I sent an estimate with my letter saying, this is the estimate for the, for the screens. On inspection, I had three companies come. The frame is really bad in the apartment. It's rusted due to rain that was coming down and leaking from the apartment above. It's full of holes, it was raggy. I have a three-year-old son and it almost, you know, scratched him and fell on him. So I put in a package I contracted with the contractor. The contractor put in a package to the office for permits for Lauder Hill because the frame had to be changed. I spoke with Doreen about this because I had gone to her personally and told her I did not get notice of the screens or anything. I submitted a letter, she said she hadn't gotten the letter, but the committee, thank goodness, had gotten the letter. She didn't know where it was. So to make a long story short, I had spoken to Doreen about this. I've spoken to George, I let them know in ahead of advance that I'm getting the frame changed out. And there's damage to the balcony and ceiling and the sides that they need to come and repair it. So the guys can come back and once it's repaired, they're gonna put up the new frame and all of that. My contractor came, he pulled out the, the frame and told me to have maintenance come and approve it. Permit has been issued by Lauder Hill. This contractor's package has been in over a month with the office. So I guess he, he didn't know that they hadn't approved or anything, he had everything done. So now I called George, I said, George, we just ripped out the frame for the balcony. You need to come and patch it. I had spoken to him before about this. He said, okay, just call me when they do it. I'll come in, it'll take two days, when it'll be dry and the guys can come in and put it back up. I was like, great. George comes over, looks at the balcony, he's like, he doesn't know what work needs to be done. That if he can do it or we have to hire a company to patch it up. He goes ahead and he calls Dan, they drive over. Dan comes to my, to the apartment, knocks on my door and begins yelling and screaming at me. This is not yours, why are you tearing it out? Did I sign anything? I said, if the contractor came, the package is with you. If I don't sign it, nothing happens. I said, well, you gave me a violation, I'm trying to fix this, so everything is taken care of. If I don't sign, well, you're getting another violation. And if I don't sign it, then it's, it's, it's not, you know, done. He said he gave me notice, this letter he, he had sent me was a violation. Oh, by the way, let me tell you, so my contractor, I called the contractor, said, what was going on? Did we get approval, what was happening? He said that he spoke to the office, his guy dropped off the package and that they said that they gave everything to them. He would have been here tonight, he said he had no problem coming, but I didn't know, there was no notice. He said, whatever's happening, you know, I'll go and explain to, to, you know, your board to see what's going on. So now he called the office and he tells them, you know, what's going on. I submitted the package, my guy submitted the package. She's like, you, she didn't submit a check. And he's like, yes, she did, I have the check, I gave it to, you know, with the whole package. He said he later went back and looked in the file and my check was in the file. He had a guy run over to the office and give them the check and said, well, here's the check. We have the permit and everything. He's like, no, we're giving her a violation. He said, well, I'm gonna, let me just put the screen back the way it was, the frame. I'll put this, we'll put it up the same day. You know, right now, don't give her a violation, we'll put up the frame. He said, no, do not put up the frame, it'll make things worse. You are to sit and dis- dismiss, right? Yes. So I hear in this letter, it says that I am to stop all work, cannot proceed or do anything. My contractor was gonna go ahead and just put up the frame the way it was back because he said that we couldn't do it. He said, no, you can't touch it.
Can I, can I stop you for just a second?
Yes.
You're, you're saying you're gonna put it back the way it was before, is that right?
He was gonna put it back, yes. And he said, no, you can't put it back.
Put it back exactly as it was before?
It was gonna be exactly.
Not, not sticking out or, or anything?
No, it's just the frame that was going out that was.
We're, we're actually way past time and we're back to loose form because my battery's dying. So why, why don't we just take you off this for now and then, uh, may, maybe Dan, can you work with the unit owner? Try to get this resolved over the next month? If not, then you can put it back on next month, but we're about to lose form, so I need to move on. What, what unit was yours again?
E1Z and he's told me not to.
Okay, let, let's just take that off for now.
Real quick, I wanna know, he told me that I don't own the frame, that it's the association who has to do it.
Okay, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna ask to take that off for now because we don't, we can't get into that right now at 10:30. Um, and we're back to loose form. Uh, so for the rest of them though, Dan, uh, what I would propose is that we make a motion to, um, to forward these to the finding committee as we usually do. Can we, can we have silence please? Uh, as we usually do, um, it would be, uh, a hundred dollars a, a day. Uh, I mean, it's a hundred dollars a day for as long as the violation, uh, exists. The first four hundred dollars would come out of the tenant's security deposit if it's a tenant occupied unit. And then any, um, any balance would come from the owner. If it's owner occupied, then the entire thousand dollars, up to a thousand dollars would come from the owner. But with the additional proviso, I would say that if it's a snowbird occupied unit, that we do not forward it to the finding committee until November. Uh, so Dan, could you please go through and remove AE1, E1Z?
I just wanna say, he said H3X and it's not on this paper, so you might wanna check if that person had noticed.
No, that was a mistake, it wasn't H3X. The one that's on the paper is correct. George said H3X, that was a mistake.
The one was on, what was on the paper? What is the correct unit? What's the correct unit, Dan?
H1F.
What does it say on the agenda?
H1F.
Okay, so it's not H3X. Why did you say H3X?
Somebody thought they heard H3X and that was wrong.
That's what I asked, is it H3X when you said H3?
No. No, it's H1F.
Somebody said, okay. And that was the screen. Okay, so anyway, for the rest, I see, I see it's like, what came after N3H? I have H3X, somebody said H3X after N3.
After, after N3H, S1L.
Somebody said H3X.
That was an error.
Okay, so it wasn't, okay.
No, it's not on.
So the, this is for units, E2J for screen, G1S for flyers, H1F screen, I3F unauthorized resident. N1A, they had two violations, too many residents and screens. H, uh, N3H balcony screen. H, is this for, no, sorry. Okay, this is where S1L comes in.
Yes.
The unauthorized dog. And S2Ls, a screen is missing or pulled out. S2Z decorations on window, S3Z storage on balcony, okay, for those. Go through and find out which ones are snowbird occupied. Can you do, do we have documentation to show which ones are snowbirds? Dan?
No, we don't have anything that actually shows snowbirds.
Okay.
The only thing I can do is look and see if they're, if they have an alternate address and if they do, then I can.
Okay, anyone that has an alternate address that doesn't have a lease associated with the apartment is most likely gonna be a snowbird. So for those people, um, do not forward them to the finding committee, uh, until November, okay?
Does that mean they don't have to fix, fix their screens until November?
Well, how can they have them on the property?
They're not here.
Right, how can they? So it's the same consideration we're giving to the jet ski guy anyways, that's a link there. Alright, so anyway, um, the, uh, Rabbit, are you still there? Unless, can we get him on your phone, please? You have his number. I lost, my battery died.
You mean you don't have a charger with you, Joan?
I didn't think this mini meeting would go like five hours.
I mean, really, I mean, really, John, you are so sad and you don't have a charger.
I can go to my apartment and come back and, John, first, thank you.
I don't believe you.
I did, we need to.
We have Rabbit, right?
The first meeting with our police, thank you. Who is the president?
You have it? You have it?
I have it. I got it.
Okay, then.
First meeting with our police. He still thinks he's on the line.
Yeah.
He's trying to voicemail.
Paul Lewis, he's on the line, Paul Lewis. If we get Lewis, we have more.
Lewis and this time, come on. Always come on.
We're not gonna store it.
Hello, this is on his second hand, I think. He's in beyond somewhere.
Can we text him to let him know that we're not? Lewis, or you want me to text? Rabbit.
Yeah, but we don't let it book it, the line here, it can come three Thursdays, so we may have to get three Thursdays, that much.
Okay, we're gonna try one more time, and if not, we just. I mean, we can still do good and welfare, but.
Yeah, that's. Can they move?
Let's start, we can go up here. Keep trying until we. Alright. First person, Joan. Oh, Joan.
We already spoke.
You. You, you wanna wave it or you want?
Uh, okay, I'll go. Yeah, okay. I'm concerned about a leak, there's a leak in my bathroom, I told Dan and George about it. And I'm concerned about the sliver pump coming down from the balcony upstairs on the second.
E2J.
Okay. Uh, George, are you worried?
I take care of about the leaking on the balcony, you have to take my monitor.
Okay, uh, Dan, we're finally up on that?
Yes, uh, that was one of the ones I told you amongst all the others that had problems, that, uh, it's not something that George can just patch.
Okay, so next is Tony.
We talked about Rory.
Dan, Dan, I'll, you're right. Uh, I don't see you on, yeah. Marvin?
I can put my name on the list, except I was told that it would be brought up at the meeting about my job.
That, no, that, that's closed meeting, we can't talk, we can't talk about personnel.
I know, I went in, I said early, but I didn't know everything about.
Oh, no, 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 that was the closed meeting. It was discussed at the closed meeting, we can't. We can't talk about personnel. Yeah. But we, Dan will talk, Dan will talk to you after about what was discussed in the closed meeting. Okay, hey, Rabbit, sorry about the, uh, my bad, I redid. Uh, we lost, we clearly lost form. Before I go on to the next good and welfare person, uh, we, we had to, um, I'm sorry? No, that's not good and welfare, this is good and welfare. Okay, uh, anyway, uh, we were discussing the, um, the violation notices. Uh, there was a lady that showed up and, um, she had, uh, she was explaining her situation in order to, uh, for the interest of time. I, I suggested we just, uh, remove that particular violation from the, uh, from, from the agenda, not from the agenda, from, from the, um.
Going to fine.
And go ahead and approve the, the remaining ones. But with this, uh, with this condition that any, uh, any unit occupied by, okay, you wanna talk at 11? Any unit occupied by, um, by a snowbird, we do not forward those to the violations committee until November. Be given adequate time to address the violation. So.
Okay, yeah.
The units, so it was E2J for screen, G1S for distributing unauthorized flyers, H1F screen, I3F, um, for unauthorized resident, N1A had two violations, it's too many residents and screens. Next one was N3H for balcony screens, S1L for unauthorized, uh, unregistered dog, S2L, uh, missing screen, S2Z decorations on window, S3Z storage on balcony. So the motion has to be, uh, to let you find a, uh, a hundred dollars per day up to a maximum of a thousand dollars. Um, in the case of N1A, it would be two because it's two violations. And the first four hundred dollars coming from the security deposit if it's a tenant occupied. Any, any balance would come from the owner, if it's owner occupied, the entire thousand dollars would come from the owner. So, uh, do you wanna make a motion to approve that?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Rabbit made the motion, Carl, you want a second? Okay, Carl seconds, any objection? Hearing none, it's approved. And then we have one final item, but I think we have to table it, I don't know. Uh, right? The last item was about washer dryer prices. Bob, you wanna make a quick presentation, but I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna determine it today because it's almost 11. But you wanna just make a quick, very quick presentation?
About?
About, about washer dryer prices. Something that Bob was, um, uh, made as a recommendation in one of his earlier treasure reports to the board, not to, not to the membership. Dan, oh, I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, as any good treasurer, you know, I'm looking for any new additional revenue streams because every penny that we raise in additional revenue gets turned, you know, into the, the village and it, we can use that to reinvest back in the village. Or we can use that to keep our monthly maintenance, uh, lower than what it would otherwise be. So one of the things that I did back in the summer, no, that's the winter. When I was here, I, I looked around at all the laundromats in the area and they're all charging a buck fifty for wash and a dollar fifty for every, for the, a dry. And, um, I was wondering, like, I know we, we got a bargain rate here, but I thought it'd be prudent to raise it up to a dollar fifty. That way, it's market rate number one, we still have the convenience of, you know, doing it in our own, uh, buildings, which is good. Uh, it's only twenty-five cents per person. At the end of, or per load, at the, at a full year, that would approximately to twenty-four thousand dollars that we can reinvest back into the village. And it's, it's market, it seems fair to me. I heard rumors that there were some individuals actually bringing their laundry here and doing it here as opposed to, you know, other places. I'd rather, um, uh, the, the money go into.
I haven't heard of anybody.
Well, I've heard, I've heard some rumors about that, I don't know how legitimate they are or not. But, um, it, it makes good sense. I know one of the promises should be that, uh, our, our washers and dryers are in, in good shape and kept in good operating order. And, you know, that would certainly be one of the conditions.
Really? Yeah, to keep them clean?
Yeah, well, yeah, cleaned and, uh, so that is something that I'm proposing. Uh, in, in my mind, it makes good sense, it's market and, uh, it, because we get every penny that comes out of those washers and dryers because we, we actually own them. Um, so, uh, I don't know what else, uh.
So you're proposing raising it to one fifty?
That's correct.
What is it now?
It's a buck a quarter.
It's one twenty-five for each, right?
Yeah.
And the, the laundromats are charging how much did you say?
They're a buck fifty.
Okay.
So it's, it's taking it to market.
Right. I don't know, the, the hour is kinda late and there's not a lot of people here and we have all the snowbirds away. I, I, I would, I would rather table this until we have more people and it's earlier in the evening, maybe.
September.
September or October?
Sure.
When, when do you come back?
I might come back in October.
Uh, well, we, we'll just table it and play it by ear, but, but anyway, um, everybody that's here, you can start thinking about that, maybe discuss with your neighbors and then maybe we'll have more people back the next time it's on the agenda. Thank you, Bob, really appreciate it. And then, uh, good and welfare, we'll just waive the rest.
She brought up a good point.
Yes?
If you're gonna raise, if you're gonna raise it, these machines are not, they're commercial grade, but they're not.
Okay, but anyway, we'll come back to it, we're not, we're not deciding anything today. Anyway, um, actually, so, uh, actually, Carl, would you like, make, would you just table this for now? We'll discuss it in a few months. Table, right? Okay, Carl made the motion, Rabbit, you agree?
Yeah.
Okay, Rabbit agrees, any objection, hearing none, it's stable. Uh, we were, on Marvin left, okay, Alice, did she leave? I can't read this next name. K W, it looks like K W I.
That would be me.
Oh, wow. I can't even read your name on here.
Yeah, I know, I've been just typing for so long, I. At the last meeting, it came up about these truly known trucks out here and they're saying, well, we're not commercial because we don't have commercial tags. So I looked it up and according to the United States Department of Transportation, designate vehicles as a, as a commercial motor vehicle and any vehicle used for the profit of an individual or business, vehicles that transport hazardous materials such as pesticides are deemed a commercial motor vehicle. So these tags may be actually illegal, but it's totally irrelevant. The trucks come along here, there's a violation of Section seven occupancy and use restrictions. Section C, an apartment owner shall show no sign, i.e. vehicles carrying signage identifying a business, advertisement or notice of any type on the common areas. I'm pretty sure that that part of space is common area. So part D of that says, no trailer, boat, van, camper, truck or other commercial vehicle shall be permitted on any portion of the common property except for trucks furnishing goods and services during daylight hours and accept on such portion of the common areas as the portions they designate or such is by its rules. In other words, if those trucks aren't spraying for bugs, they need to be out of here by dark, by dark. And we don't need to make it anything special. You don't have to vote on anything, just tell Mario, take care of it, he knows what to do, I've spoken to him. He just needs you to say, Mario, take care of business. Do you like the copy? Oh, it is, it's right here at the bottom. Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, we, we'll follow up on that, right, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, so just, just, uh, keep the board advised of your progress on that. Freddie?
Um, yeah.
Is it the same, the same issue?
No.
Okay.
So there's a wa- a water heater that broke on the, in ATO wise and the carpet was all soaked. And they tried to dry it up, but it's still wet, it still smells. And if we can, you know, get the smell out, I don't know what remedial things are happening because it was there for quite a while, there's mold or something that needs to be checked on, like what's being done with that?
Dan and George, can you follow up? Yes.
And then.
Yeah, that's what happened there. One, well, one day, one day, for Texi was listening on there, a lady, she broke in the water heater. He bring the, the, what is, uh, the company is doing with the business and fixing the water heater.
Dan?
I, I throw the water, you know, I driving in there. And the next Monday or two days ago, he tries coming, he says, you know, have nothing. He's discussing with me, no, the water heater is broken. No, it's not broken, okay. You're the sponsor, you, you gonna open the water again. The company, he opened the water and next day we have water again. Today, they changed the water heater.
Okay, what part of that?
So we're getting, we're getting a remediated tube and printing mold?
E1W? Yes.
Are we getting service pro out there too, to, to remediate?
It's out, it's outside.
Oh, it's outside?
It's in the hallway.
It's in the hallway?
Yes.
But I mean, but I mean, are we getting any remediation?
I'll have the name tomorrow.
Okay, so we're following.
And then the last thing is George, the trash, when the recycling guys come and they take the, the bin, there's broken glass all on the walkway, it's dangerous and dirt, like, so they ask, they should know when they're coming to pick it up. It's dangerous and dirt, like, so they ask, they should know when they're coming to pick it up. Once they pick it up, somebody should be out there cleaning, cleaning it up.
Yes.
Okay, great, next, Nava, Ben Sh, Ben Shoshan?
Hi, I'm here to talk about the salon and I'm allowed to talk about the salon with this for you guys.
Well, it depends on what you prefer because this is-